Question with the deadline. So if there's anybody that we failed to capture in this process on April 23rd and 27th, not inclusive, two days. Is that what you're saying?
It's five days, so it's all week.
Okay, so it's a five-day span.
Five-day process.
If there's anybody that we failed to capture, is there, like, you know, is 2-1-1 capturing this information? Because somebody calls in and says, yeah, I need a place to stay. Okay, I guess you're homeless. Have you been enumerated?
Right.
I mean, are we just, are we doing everything we can to get all the data?
Yeah. So the province just wants a snapshot. So they say, we only want to know what's happening in that week, right? Which is great. So we're doing it and we'll provide that information to the province. But what we have is, we actually have a spreadsheet set up already, a database already, in which if someone comes to us downstairs and reports that they're homeless, then number one, we hook them with, hook them up with some services, but we also take more information from them. Knowing that we were hiring our homelessness enumeration coordinator as of this January, or April, May 2, through the Y, then we'll actually have somebody that can take on that one-on-one caseload too. And any time throughout the year, we definitely keep a statistic as to how many people are homeless. A lot of people don't necessarily consider themselves homeless too. If they're couch surfing, they don't, if they've got a buddy's place to stay tonight, they don't necessarily think of themselves as homeless. Homeless to a lot of people is that person that's actually living on the streets. But in fact, they really are, because if that buddy's couch wasn't there, and they, they really do have nowhere else to call home. So we're starting a lot of that education process happening too, and staff asking a few more questions when people are reporting to us. So, yes, and we, we're just starting this this year to get a better picture of what homelessness looks like. So hopefully by the end of this enumeration, and then, you know, go around by the next year, so we'll have more information.
Uh huh. And so if I may, i- i- in terms of the inclination of people to actually tell you the truth, so it occurred to me that there might be a little what's in it for me to even show up to talk to you. So you've addressed that to a degree, but I mean, do you think that there's value in any of us trying to get the word out that we want this data? And how do you do that in a way that people are inclined to actually answer the call?
So I think by working with community partners. So people do show up at O'Shaire, for instance, who provides meals, at Meal on the Hill and other places. And that's where we have staff, and we're also training their staff for that week to say, you know, we know that you're in here so many days or whatnot, you know, do, what's your situation? Are you homeless? And we also have, we are providing a $25 gift card for people that do do it. We can advertise it, that's part of the rules, is that you can't say that. But we don't want them to go away empty-handed. At least, we're giving them something that they can then buy food with or whatever, right? So there's a little bit of incentive there. But most people genuinely come into a place like that because they need the services. So they, they do tend to. And I think working with police and other services too, they're, they're going to know those people that they see over and over again that are, that are still at the same services. And, and again, this is our first time trying it, so I think we'll probably have a lot of lessons learned on how we can improve too.
Thank you for that.
So it's during that week, 2-1-1 will be appraised and be a reference point?
Yes.
Also, leading up to that, lower tiers probably do have ways of publicizing it as well. Are we going to share with the lower tiers?
A poster has gone out to all the lower tiers, so if there's some way to advertise, whether it's somebody walking in that day, or however, that would be great.
Okay, so there's an awareness at the, at the lower tiers?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Okay. Yes, Councilor Mackin.
Emery, is this only information coming from the individual that's homeless, or can agencies that know people are homeless provide that to you?
So for this enumeration, it is only the individual saying, this is how I am. There's actually about 18 questions that are answered by the individual that probably an agency may not, may or may not be able to say. One of them is, how long have you been homeless? One of them might be, are there other people in your family that have nowhere, or that are with you that have nowhere to stay that day? So it's getting at those pictures. But that's just for the enumeration. If there's an agency working with someone, we want to know about it. So what we're looking at doing is implementing a hyphus, which is a database that will allow us to actually share information with common denominators rather than, or common identifiers rather than names. And we're looking at doing this down the road in a few months, hopefully, in which agencies will allow, will be able to share some of that information. So yes, certainly, if someone is homeless, please give us a call, because there maybe are supports that we can help them out with.
Thank you. Thank you, Emery, for that update. No motion, so it's just for information, right?
Yeah, no, there is a motion.
Is there, what's the motion?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, that's the next one. My, my fault.
I did, I was looking for a motion, but again, thank you for the information, and thank you for sharing. So, we are, next motion is the transfer of Twin Pines property to Gray County. And we put this on the floor, that report HDR CW0718 be received, and that the property is identified as part of Park Lot 8, North Side of Chester Street, West Plan 500 Durham, as in GS38555, except our 4433637 geographic township of Bentec, municipality of West Gray, county of Gray, be acquired from Her Majesty, the Queen of, Queen in Right of Ontario, as represented by the Minister of Infrastructure, and that the warden and clerk be authorized to sign and transfer the agreement to transfer the ownership from Her Majesty, the Queen, to Gray County, and that the county proceed with the option to, and issue a request for proposal for interested parties to build affordable housing, and that once the transfer of land is finalized, staff proceed with a notice of intent to declare the land surplus, surplus, sorry. Put that on the floor. Councilor Burley, Second Order, Councilor Bell, discussion. Thank you.
So as you can see on the map provided, there is a parcel of land that is beside Twin Pines, one of our own buildings in Durham. And we had thought that this land was devolved to, down to us at the time, as all of others were in 2001. We had some interest in the land from a private party, and discovered that the land was not transferred to the county at devolution, that it was still registered to its, well, it was registered to its previous owner of Twin Pines Apartments. And Twin Pines Apartments had a voluntary, voluntarily dissolved in December, for, December 1st of 1971. So we were through the Forfeited Corporate Property Act. We made an application for relief of forfeiture of the land. The ministry asked us what our intent would be with the land, and if it would be to provide affordable housing on that land, since it is attached to affordable housing. We responded that it was our intention to see the future use of the property to include affordable housing units. And we received an agreement March 13th of this year from the province to purchase the land for $2 on an as-is basis. And we know that the land's in good condition, because we've been looking after it and paying the taxes all these years. So we have put two options for the land, is that what the county would go ahead and bu- build affordable us, units on the land, and it would be a mix of market and affordable, so that would be attainable and affordable units. Or that we would put out a request for proposal to see if there were interested parties in developing the land, ensuring that there were affordable units within that development. The property that is beside it that we own, that has an apartment building on it, has an apartment building with 11 apartments and parking, and they're around the same size, so that's probably around what could be possible, or obviously a little bit more. So I guess I'm just here today to get some comments and direction from council on which way to proceed with either going out for an RFP or ourselves, and for the transfer of the land.
Thank you, Emery. Any comments, questions, Emery? Guess it's all cool. All right. So that being said, we'll ask that the motion be put out for, for vote. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion is passed. Okay. So the next one we have is that report HDR CW0618 regarding additional funding through the Social Housing Apartment Improvement Program be received, and that Gray County Council approves the additional funding from the province in the amount of $111,547, and that council endorses the business plan for additional year-one funding, and the 2018-21 business plan, and that the plans be submitted to the province. Put that on the floor, please. Councilor Barfoot, Second Order, Councilor Wright, discussion.
So this is our Social Housing Apartment Improvement Program. I was here, I believe, in March with some information. We had received funds, a quick turnaround time from the province. And we have received actually additional funds now. These funds are based on carbon market, so each month we, we get a letter stating how much towards these funds that we have received from the province, or that has been approved. The additional funds that we received are $111,547, and that has to be committed by the end of this April. So as to what we're going to do with it, we don't have to have it spent, just a commitment. We had replaced when we did, had some water damage at our high-rise, and the high-rise is the only building that's above 150 units to qualify. We had some water damage to the envelope, and we replaced one part of the roof. This money will allow us to repair, or not actually repair, but replace the remaining sections of the roof. There's also funds for Phase 2 in this report, and that is from 2018 to 2021. We received $7,300, or $736,000. We've made some recommendations, again, for our, our high-rise in switching out the LED lighting, or switching out to LED lighting, and also looking at our exterior lighting. Right now, we only have, we don't probably have enough exterior lighting, and it's not LED, so we'd like to put in some more, and also look at changing that over. We'd like to explore solar energy and install some solar photovoltaic system in which can be used to, I guess, generate some funds to go towards the electricity that we use there. We're looking at about $150,000 for that system, and $170,000 by the time we get it hooked up. And it has about a nine-year payback, but since the money is not coming from county funds, we figured that it would probably, it's, it's got a zero-life payback at this point. So it, it estimates about $12,000 a year that the system would save us in funds for electricity. We have also, are looking at the wooden doors. So the wooden doors are not part of this building, but in the guidelines, it said that if we could prove that our buildings that were 150 and over were well-maintained, and that we had looked after the envelope and any air makeup system or whatnot, which we've done with previous funds, then we could look at putting that to, to buildings that were 50 and above. And we have a number of our units that require doors to be replaced. It's the original exterior doors on them, and they are wooden. And a lot of them do have drafts warping, not closing properly. And we thought that this would be, since this is climate change and energy efficiency, that that would be one way of spreading the money throughout to other, some of our other buildings. And we have to have a business case, business plan into the province before the end of this month.
Okay, thank you, Emery. Any questions? Councilor Burley?
Emery, is this the section of roof where there's already a solar array there now, and you're going to delete that and replace it with new? What are you doing?
Yes. So the solar that we have right now is 20, 25 years old, and basically inefficient. And it was hooked up to our domestic water, hot water. So this one will actually be hooked up to electricity, and it will, but we are looking at probably deleting what we have right now. And that is also the area that the roof has not been completed either, so it makes sense to, to do it all in one instead of separately. We're still investigating. Again, it was rather quick turnaround time with the ministry guidelines, but if there is a way to keep both, we could look at that. But we do know right now, from the person that was there saying, that basically they've, they've come to the end of their life, the solar panels.
Just if you do decide to go to a different solar array, would you do it differently than 20 years ago? Like, you understand what I mean?
Yes, I do. And the systems are different now, too. The system that we have right there, too, we have no way of, of monitoring. There's nothing that tells us any energy savings or any, and what we would be doing is, we would certainly with the photovoltaic system, be putting in something that we could determine how much we're actually saving.
Okay, any other questions, Emery, at this time? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion's passed. Thank you very much, Emery, for all those updates. Okay. Patrick is up next. We're going to put a motion on, on the floor, that report TR CW 2018 regarding tender award recommendations for RFT TS0380 be received, and that the tender be awarded to EC King Contracting for $1,947,652.43, excluding taxes, and that a 5% construction contingency be added to the tender price, resulting in a revised estimated project cost of $2,081,027.67, net of HST, and that the project deficit of $81,027.67 be funded from any surplus realized from, within the 2018 capital construction budget, or if a surplus is not available, from the Federal Gas Tax Reserve. Also move. Councilor McQueen, Councilor McKean, McQueen and McQueen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The, this is on page 51 of your package, is the map of the road section that we're completing. So the tender was put out in February. It's an 8.2-kilometer pulverized and paved of gray road 32, 3.25-meter lanes and 0.75-meter shoulders with two lifts of hot mix. We got four very competitive bids on page 49, very close, and we're recommending award to EC King Contracting. It's, because of contingency money, it's slightly overbudgeted, and we were going to get the $81,000 shortfall from the gas tax, if we need it. We're not sure, you know, we're going to try to use as little and as much as possible, of course. But we're recommending award.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilor Barfoot?
Well, just a comment, I guess it's kind of a good news, bad news. We haven't had a project yet that's come in under estimate, which, so that pot's going to get drained here relatively soon. And the oil prices are fluctuating basically on a daily basis, so I can't see, coming into the busier season, the asphalt cement price itself coming down any, but I guess we'll have to wait and see.
Could we, yes?
Yeah. And one thing to, to mention that is that asphalt cement index that we have in all our, that correction in all our tenders, so, which you don't know until after the month passes that you paved in. So we're kind of assuming we'll have to probably pay something this year, which we've been lucky enough to recently, but it's still, that figure's still hanging out there, whatever it ends up being.
Thank you for that, Pat. Councilor Bell, and then, Councilor Ardell?
And just to go along with what Pat said, I did take liberty, we were discussing some stuff in West Gray, and wondered what the price was over last year. And Pat did make note that the asphalt index price is about 20% higher than it was last year. So that's why these projects are coming in like-
What was that percentage, sir?
20.
20, yeah.
Okay, and that came from Matt.
How's Lardell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So .75 paved shoulders, that wouldn't include for cyclists, then, because that's pretty small. So is this going to be non-cyclists down there? I just saw Bill Abbott's in here earlier, and I think he was a little disappointed. So that's why I'm making the comments, because I'll let you answer. Sorry.
Yes, Patrick.
And the reason that was chosen, it was, basically that was the width of the platform. So to go above and beyond and start building up the platform, then you're into, you know, the 119 type of money. That being said, if, if you go to the Book 18 nomograph, which kind of allows you, which is a cycling guide, kind of allows you to pick if paved shoulders are even needed or not. The traffic volumes are quite low, and they're probably not even really warranted. So in our mind, a .75, it's going to kind of help our maintenance. It's somewhere for them. Most cyclists would feel that it's adequate, I guess. Or I shouldn't say, none of them feel it's adequate, they all want 1.5. But they can traverse it pretty easily. So we're feeling we're doing the most that we can with that, .75.
And I guess that was the clue, it's not that well-traveled, the road. So cyclists will go down there. But I thought we had it somewhere that we were going to make all roads for, with cycling paths. I thought that was the intention.
Go ahead, Patrick, yeah.
And that is kind of with me to, to establish the paved shoulder policy. It is our, currently to pave shoulders as wide as we can. What I'd like to establish with a more formal policy, which I have to complete, is in some cases, that would include building a platform, like we did for the 119, because the cycling is so prevalent. Other ones like this, we would just pave probably what the platform is, rather than get into the major, major reconstruction. So that is something I still have to finalize, as far as formalizing which roads fall under which bracket.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor McKean?
Thanks, Warden. Holliday, just to Pat, and in the past, and it hasn't been done here in a while, I don't think, if ever, was that when the contract was left, that the municipality or the county would pay the asphalt cement price at the time, basically put it in reserve. Is there ever been any thought, because I just think it would may tighten down what we're going to spend on, on the roads if we did it that way. Basically, we're pre-buying the cement, or letting the, the contractor have some flexibility with, with that. Have you ever had any experience with, with that type of thing? I know in MTO, they used to do it quite frequently back in the, back in the 80s and 90s.
No, we haven't. I mean, I suppose we could try to estimate what the index would be, but then we're kind of, are you, I'm kind of misunderstanding what exactly-
What, what happened in the past is whatever, you know, you can figure out the tonnage of asphalt cement you're going to use for tonnage of asphalt you're going to produce. And what municipalities did in the past was, at the, at the tender said, we will pay the asphalt cement index at that particular time, taking that out of the equation as far as indexing it later on, like two or three months later.
It's locking in at the time of tender.
If I can, are you, you actually forwarding them the money you're going to have at the time?
No, you don't, you don't do that. But it, well, either that, or there's two ways of doing it. Either holding it in abeyance, or you pay the asphalt cement company, whichever one they're using. Because, I mean, these, some of these companies have tens of thousands of gallons of, or tons of storage in, in their arsenal. I'm just, it, it was done in the past, as a way of keeping your costs exactly what you knew they were going to be to that part, rather than this index, because it, it, believe me, I've been involved in that business, and there was eight or nine years ago, where the price of asphalt cement doubled from April till August, and some municipalities didn't do the projects at all because of the cost. And then, and you kind of get away from that unknown.
Yes, Patrick.
I guess my, my only worry about, about that kind of thing is, really, the AC index is in there so that the contractor's going to get paid whatever the price of asphalt is. So we're trying to avoid him having to speculate. Same as, we've done fuel indexes in the past, too, right? So then he's not kind of playing the market on what he thinks the price of asphalt may or may, like, he's probably not going to lose that deal if he estimates it's going to go up to 800 or 700, whatever he thinks. I think we're just, he knows he's going to get paid. It's not maybe a little lack of clarity for us, but at least we're kind of being straightforward that he doesn't have to guess at what he's going to pay. I don't know.
Thank you for considering that.
You're the, you're the, you're the asphalt guy.
Well, it would never be a contractor, would ever, would ever speculate on what that market's going to be.
Yeah, it's, it's volatile. Okay, so any other, yes, Councilor Posber?
Just a quick one, Mr. Warden.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we just using price as a determination, or is there quality assurance behind the scenes that you're using to weight these decisions?
Mr. Warden, we have a contractor rating system. That being said, currently, every contractor we've used has, has passed enough of the rating system to not be denied work. So we do rate them, we sit down with them at the end of the job, tell them things we're happy with, things we're not happy with, give them the form. But currently, everyone is acceptable to this bid on this job.
Well, thank you for that, and that's good news. More specifically, I wasn't looking for qualitative assessment of the supplier as the material that they're using. So we're comparing apples to apples in terms of quality of material that they're all bringing to this proposed project?
Yes, everything will pass the OPS specs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? All in favor of this motion? Motion is passed. Thank you very much. So the next one is that report TR CW 2118 regarding the engineering technologist position be received, and that Gray County proceed with hiring an engineering technologist, and that the position be funded from the Transportation General Reserve in 2018, and included in the 2019 budget. Pardon me, put that on the floor. Councilor Pringle, Second Order, Councilor McKean, discussion, or presentation, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. On page 55 of your package, there is the transportation services organizational chart. And you'll notice at the, I don't know if it's, can we get that up on the screen for me? I guess I should have told you that in advance, huh? Sorry about that. Well, I'll continue on anyway, we'll find it there. But basically, the, the lowest position in the engineering group is the engineering technologist position. The staff member that was in that position, we had moved to the maintenance asset management technologist position, which is the second one below the maintenance manager. The reason we did that was because there seemed to be a kind of a, almost a position lacking in maintenance and asset management. So we had a retired employee doing asset management that, he's since retired. And we didn't want to lose that asset management component we've been working on. We're trying to get all our stuff catalogued, we have a lot of assets in varying degrees of kind of inspections and evaluations. So we moved the technologist into that position to help the maintenance manager, and to just keep the asset management going. We had a lot of maintenance contracts, too, that were, are coming out again this year. Now, that being said, he's, he is a professional engineer, he's our youngest employee in the office, and so he's really benefited from being in that maintenance role. He's learned a lot about maintenance, which you really don't learn when you come from a consultant. But it has sort of hurt the engineering team, in that he's probably our fastest guy on the computer as well, being the youngest, funny how that works. But, and we just find internally, we really have done well with our team, kind of pumping out our drawings and our tenders, compared to going to a consultant. It almost seems as much work to look after a consultant as it does to do it yourself. We've been trying to get farther and farther ahead for a few years. Right now, we're working on the 2019 designs. And every year, we can get, you know, say every year, we gain a few months on kind of getting tenders done, getting packages finished. Better estimates helps us with our five-year plan and our budgeting. So we're really missing that engineering technologist, since we've moved him over to the other area. So we're looking to backfill that engineering technologist position. Otherwise, we're just worried we're going to fall behind. Basically, that, that person would be doing a lot of surveying, Civil 3D, which is like our road AutoCAD drawing software. And we're looking to backfill that position. We'd be, we didn't have it in the budget this year, so we'd be getting it out of reserve, and then next year, we'd have that position in the budget. So we'd really like to fill, fill that, because we get about, we're about 40% less charge our rate than consultants, plus the guy's here, he's learning the way we work, and just learning about our projects, and it just, it would really help the department to get more tenders done and get ahead in our design. So we're looking to fill that position.
Thank you. Any questions of, to our director? Looks like no questions? Oh, Councilor Nichols, yes, thank you.
So the impact really to this year's budget, what would be coming out, if you got that advertised, the position be filled by June 1st?
That's what we're hoping. So it's in the financial, about $49,000 for this year.
Right.
By the time we get somebody there, and then that person, you know, the $89,000 would be there in next year's budget.
Well, the $89,000 would be there next year-
Would be for the full year.
-in a, in a full year, so that's not quite point one, or a little more than point one. Closing in on about point 1.5 increase before we even start into next year's budget, correct?
Yeah, well, well, I don't know the exact number, but-
That's why I said, just kind of around. I'm not challenging it, I think we do need it, but it's one of those things of adding it right now. The impact it is going to have, the full impact's going to be realized next year in the budget. Just-
Thank you for that.
Keeping everybody aware.
Maybe other savings. Thank you. All in favor of this motion? That motion is passed. Okay, so we're now on to Randy, I guess, and now Scott. Oh, where's Scott?
That's back.
Hey, Scott, come on up then. Didn't see you there behind the podium. Okay, I'm going to put this motion on the floor, that report PD RW 1418 regarding an overview of proposed application 42T 2018-05 to establish a plan of subdivision consisting of 240- of 247 lots on lands described as part of Lot 24, Division 2, Concession 1, EGR, geographic township of Gawnalg, in the municipality of West Gray, be received for information. On the floor, motion, Counselor Echols and Counselor Bell. I guess that's okay. Go ahead.
Drive on.
Drive on.
Great, thanks, Warden Halliday, and members of council. So, what we have before us, as the motion stated is, is a application for a new plan of subdivision, and it would be accompanied at the municipal level for an application for a zoning amendment. The subject lands are up there for you on the screen right now. They're in the northeast end of Durham. They're about 17.8 hectares in size, and ultimately, the plan of subdivision would gain access through Jackson Street East to Highway 6, and it would gain access onto Durham Road East at the south end of the property. Future accesses would also be left to connect to that vacant property to the east that you see, as well as a future access to the north should those lands come into the settlement area in the future. Some members of council may remember that this property, along with the property immediately to the east, came into the urban boundary of Durham in 2012 through the county's official plan review, official plan amendment number 80 at that time. Here's a more detailed look at it, which shows the proposed plan of subdivision. The proposed plan of subdivision will be made up of 123 single detached dwellings, 60 semi-detached dwellings, and 64 townhouse dwellings. You can see on the northwest end of the settlement, of the plan there, there is a block for stormwater management drainage. To the northeast of the plan, we can see it better actually on this air photo, there will be some woodlands that are retained, and then, as I said, a mixture of single semis and towns throughout, mostly fronting onto new internal roads with the connections that I spoke of before. There was pre-submission consultation on this application done both with the municipality and the county in this regard, and the Conservation Authority. A number of the normal studies have been prepared in this regard, including the planning report, the environmental report, servicing in stormwater and traffic. One of the unique aspects about this particular development was, they actually did a stage one to four archaeological assessment, which took it right down to removing artifacts on site with the ministry's blessing, of course, and they found about 1,000 artifacts, which was pretty neat. So, at this stage, we haven't done a detailed application review. We're looking to move forward with the municipality of West Gray to go to a public process, certainly get all the public comments and agency comments, and then ultimately come back before this committee with a recommendation on the plan of subdivision. As such, the motion at this stage is just to receive this for information, but certainly if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor Ardell?
Thank you. We've just had a housing forum, and looking at these detached semis and townhouses, I'm wondering if there's going to be any affordable housings in this subdivision.
Yes, you can.
That's a great question. At this stage, we don't know. We know that there will be a range of products, and hopefully, some of the semis and the towns may be more on the affordable range. One of the challenges that staff face at this level is, we know how big the lots will be, but unless there's any provincial or county money funding this, tying them to an agreement for affordable housing, we don't have any control at this stage as to what the ultimate build-out of those homes will be, so whether or not the developer chooses to put high-end finishes on them, taking them out of the affordable range versus a more moderate finish, which might leave it that way. Certainly, in the pre-submission consultation meeting for this application, we stress both at the county and municipal level that we do have a desire for more affordable, and in some cases, also rental units, but at this stage, it's not been determined just yet.
Thank you, that's a good, honest answer. Yes, Counselor Wright?
Thank you very much. I wonder, Scott, if you can point out to me where the exits are. I see one, I believe, is on Durham Road, and I'm not sure, but is the other one Jackson Street?
Yes, in this case, there would be a new exit onto Durham Road, and then one through the existing Jackson Street, which would take you out to Highway 6. There's also a proposed access heading east, which would connect to this property to the east, which would then have two more accesses onto Durham Road East, but at this point, that application hasn't come forward yet. So, should this be approved and built tomorrow, so to speak, there would only, there would be two accesses onto existing built, maintained roads.
I can't, I don't understand why, when every time we get a subdivision like this, we always talk about the exits, and yet, we keep getting subdivision plans without exits. Is it not important to us to make sure that if there was a problem at one of these exits, that there was another way for these 239... Oh, that's not it, I don't, I can't remember how many, 247 lots, that these people have a way of getting out? Does that not bother us that we don't, isn't that our responsibility to see that there's a safe way for them to get out?
Scott, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, your comments are well-taken, and that's something we've actually looked to address as part of the new official plan, to actually put some teeth to it, put some numbers to it, to say that when you go beyond this number threshold, you need additional accesses. Both the City of Owen Sound and Town of Blue Mountains have very specific numbers in that regard in their engineering standards, so we're moving there at the county. In the case of this particular application, they've done what they can with respect to the existing development, because they only have limited frontage onto Durham Road East and no frontage onto Jackson, onto Highway 6. They have proposed as many accesses as they can, but certainly, we'll be working with the municipality and the review agencies to determine whether or not those two existing accesses are sufficient to meet the needs of these 247 units. And it might be that phasing plans need to be considered such that they only get X number of units before they need to build a new access, or before they need to look at further accesses, but we'll work with the engineers in that regard. That's one of the reasons Traffic Impact Study was triggered in this case, because that is a crucial question, and...
Well, because we do have that problem in the city. We have an area on the southeast hill that has one access, and if there was a problem at that one access that was major and people needed to get out, they probably have to drive over the escarpment down into the lower hill in order to get to wherever they needed to go. And I just, I just don't think, I don't think I'd even approve one of those plans unless I can see where there's more access.
Scott's taking that into consideration. I know Counselor McQueen, McKean has a comment, and then Counselor Echols.
Yeah, thanks, Warden Halliday. And Scott, I don't even know that we have any ability to this, but this property was owned by a really prominent harness racing family in Ontario. He's actually, he uses the word pioneer. Maybe I'd look to my counselors from West Gray, that when, you know, that there'd be some plaque or maybe a street naming to dedicate to that, because the family that did own that was an extremely important cog in harness racing in Ontario for decades.
Thank you, John. Counselor Echols, you had some comments?
I'll answer to Counselor McKean first. Yes, that was, I believe, one of the last points in the sale of the property to Sunvale Homes, that some of those streets in there be named after some of the horses or the family itself. Yes. The Counselor Wright, as you can see, there's an exit onto Jackson Street, which will take you out onto Highway 6. That's to the west. You have the one that's coming out onto Durham Road East, which is onto the south. You see that you have the other one going north on that same street will take you basically not over a cliff, but into a farmer's field at this point in time, just basically, and that would be at that little gray spot in the end of, the west end of the racetrack, and out onto Highway 6 going forward. And the other one is to the east, is built into there, and is that development, and it's about two lots to where access comes down onto highway, or onto Durham Road East. So...
Which end is that? If I'm in, are you talking about this one out here?
The east would be to the, furthest to the right, and you can see where that street comes along there. Right about, yeah, you can see, and then that comes out there and straight down right there. There's a road access there. With your golf cart, you could use that today.
Is that what you're talking about? That's not open.
Not open as of yet, no. But that is...
And that one is open.
For the point of it right now, it could be used as an emergency, but it'll be into the future, so that you don't get blocked in and having to go over the escarpment.
Thanks for that input. Yes, Counselor Greenfield and Mackey?
I'm wondering what Green State's... I'm up in the upper right-hand corner, there's Bushlock, I think it's going to state, and then in the upper left-hand corner on the map, I see Stormwater Management there, you know, is that, is that going to be Green State's for this subdivision, or are we taking a cash and lieu, or what's happening now?
It's a good question. In this case, the developer has proposed a cash and lieu approach for this particular piece of land. There will be the stormwater management block in the northwest, as you pointed out, but that typically doesn't count as parkland, that's for managing their stormwater, and they are preserving those woodlands. One of the things that municipal and county staff have been dealing with in this case is, we are dealing with two rather large vacant properties currently, and in talking to potential developers of either property, we've encouraged them, excuse me, although they're in different ownership, to try to work together on the potential for parkland up in this area. In this case, this particular developer hasn't proposed parkland here. We'll work with staff at the municipality to see whether that's an appropriate approach at the municipal level, or whether, in fact, they would like some parkland here. Certainly, cash and lieu is an option under the Planning Act, but it doesn't mean that a municipality has to accept it, but it certainly can. So, certainly between this development and the potential development to the east, there would appear to be the need for some parkland, just based on the amount of potential housing units that are going in. So, that's one of the questions we do need to dig into further going forward.
Okay, who else had a question?
Counselor Mackey.
Counselor Mackey, sorry, I didn't see you there. Screaming Lou?
Scott.
Sorry.
It's a sweater.
Oh. Scott, how long did this subdivision, from start to finish, how long has it been in the works? I'm just curious as to the, you know, length of time it takes for a developer to, you know, purchase property until he's ready to put shovels in the ground?
That's a good question. In this case, I don't know exactly how long. I would estimate somewhere between sort of a year to a year and a half. Anecdotally, the developer has noted the archaeological surprises on the property took a little longer. In many cases, we find that the environmental impact studies can be the longest studies to complete, because in some cases, the ichologists and biologists need to visit the property in three different seasons, and then, you know, go back and write up their report. So, it's certainly not at all uncommon for a developer to have at least a year into an application before ever submitting the application to us. In some cases, we talk to people very early on, so we have a good concept of when they've started that process. In other cases, we talk to them shortly before they submit their application. We did meet with this particular developer, you know, I'd say about a year ago, so my guess is they have somewhere in the neighborhood of a year and a half into this, and they're now just sort of at the beginning of the application stage. But we hope that by doing that work upfront, it will allow for the application process to run fairly smoothly and eliminate maybe some surprises that they could otherwise encounter by not being so thorough upfront.
When do you just give Kevin's advice, or how do you know?
We'd accept you into West Gray. That's a big advantage right there. Big hurdle to go over.
You could try...
I'll let Scott answer that one.
Okay, Scott, yes.
In this case, I would estimate that the application process, the processes themselves between the subdivision and the zoning typically take, you know, anywhere sort of from four to eight months, unless there's any large hurdles, and from there, sometimes they have to complete their detailed engineering as a condition of draft approval, and in some cases, get other approvals, like stormwater management approvals. So, realistically speaking, maybe they could, they could look at building in 2019, but I would suggest that 2018 is probably not going to be feasible in this regard, as painful as that sounds.
Okay. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Scott, I see a stormwater management report, and sometimes we see a preliminary stormwater management report. So, is this evolved to the point where there were past preliminary, or we just went straight to not preliminary? Is there circumstances where you have a preliminary and not?
Sure, good question. In that case, it sometimes can be just sort of the naming protocol of a particular consultant that's doing the study. Typically, at this stage, we would only have a preliminary stormwater management report, and that's certainly what I'd class this study at. The engineering for a project is quite often the most expensive piece of a project, so they don't typically want to proceed right to detailed design until they have some feedback from groups like the municipality and the Conservation Authority as to what exactly is needed out of that detailed design. So, what would most common happen through a plan of subdivision process is, is we would get this preliminary stormwater management report, it would be circulated, and we'd get comments from the public and agencies, and then if the development were to be draft approved, one of the conditions of draft approval would be to go forward and have the detailed design and the detailed sort of final stormwater management report, if you will. In this case, they've chosen not to name it a preliminary stormwater management report, but that's what we would class it as in this case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion? Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Thanks, Scott. Are you going to talk about the OMB appeals list?
Sure, I can.
Motion on the floor that the Ontario Municipal Board Appeals File List be received for information? Counselor Fosbrook? Counselor Woodbury? Thank you. I knew you were making that move there. Okay, thank you. Discussion.
In this case, based on our protocol, we bring forward this report anytime there's a new update on it. In this case, we have received a new appeal to a plan of subdivision in the Town of Blue Mountains, known as the Home Farm Subdivision. The developer has, excuse me, appealed the non-decision of the plan of subdivision. This same developer is already involved in an appeal to the Town of Blue Mountains official plan, and they've similarly appealed the official plan amendment at the town level and the zoning amendment at the town level. So, that package is actually going out to the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal today, and we'll work with town staff to look to, hopefully, a settlement on this. When it is an appeal of a non-decision, typically, based on our appeal protocol, county staff are involved in working towards a settlement where a settlement is possible.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor McQueen, and then Counselor Fosbrook.
Excuse me, just briefly, I understand April 3rd or whatever was the change to OMB, to a more local LPAD? Can I have like a half a minute brief update on anything on that? Like, so from now on, any appeals goes into that new body, right?
Sure. Planning staff are still working to try to understand what all this means. Generally speaking, appeals received after April 3rd in most cases will be heard by the new Local Planning Appeal Tribunal, which is the LPAT. There are a few exceptions out there where they may still be heard under the old system by the Ontario Municipal Board. We hope to bring something forward in the future which may help council understand the new process a little better. I was on a webinar earlier today trying to understand it, and even the lawyers that they had hired to do the webinar had a lot of question marks still. So, we're working, along with all our other colleagues in the province, to understand this. In many cases, the big difference will be hearings at the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal will be based on the written record, and there won't be verbal evidence given or adduced at the hearing, which changes the process a little bit in that you'll see municipal and county planning reports get longer. We need to include more detail when we're not, when we don't have the ability... We need to include more detail when we're not, when we don't have the ability to back up our opinions at the board, and you'll also potentially see the need for changes in, in some council procedures, including minute-taking, to make sure that council's opinion is clearly on the books, because the new system does purport to give more deference to municipal or county councils' opinions in that regard as well.
So I, I know from being a chair of our committee of adjustment, at one time, they always said that comments and discussion and how each member came up with that decision is, so it sounds like it's going to be more capturing of those. The other thing is, that's OMB. What about the environmental tribunal? Is it under the same thing, or is it a different?
That's one of the other question marks is, is where you have applications that are traditionally processed by the Ontario Municipal Board, under different pieces of legislation as well. So the other one that we quite frequently would deal with would be a municipal application in terms of a zoning on a new gravel pit, but then you have also the license application under the Egert Resources Act. Some of the, the preliminary answers we've had to date on this new process might be that you would actually have two separate hearings, but we'll wait to, to get something more concrete in that regard. I don't know if Randy has anything further here.
No, exactly what we've heard to date is that, based on what, I said on a webinar with actual, there's tribunal members there, and they indicated that there would be, in those situations where, where you have appeals, let's say official plan or zoning law amendment, where you took it in quarry, appeal the Egert Resources Act, there would be two separate hearings, because the changes didn't apply to the Egert Resources Act.
Okay. There you are. So Counsel Fosbrook had a question?
I think it's a simple question. So somebody was asking me recently about the policy that the county and at least Southgate has adopted in relation to participation or not participating in OMB hearings. Is this something that is, you know, common across the province? Can we say that the majority have adopted a similar policy? What can you tell me about the degree to which this is absolutely the way to go, in contrast to others? And is there a possibility that we might revisit that in, in, in light of these changes with this LPAD, if you will? Maybe not so simple, I apologize.
No, it, it's a good question. I can't speak for, for what all others across the province do. I know i- in terms of some of the municipalities I'm aware of, most of them would have some sort of procedure for when they choose to involve themselves formally in an Ontario Municipal Board matter, and when they don't, simply based on, on the sheer costs of being involved in an Ontario Municipal Board hearing. And, and if a municipality or a county chooses to be there with staff and, and with legal representation, those costs do add up, and, and what we've seen in some municipalities is even a fee structure to say that, you know, if you want municipal staff and solicitor there, there might need to be a contribution made to, to having them there, otherwise they would only appear under summons. From a county staff perspective, we moved to this approach in, I want to say about 2013, maybe? Maybe it was earlier. Yeah, 2013. Based on the fact that at that time, we had a gravel pit hearing that lasted approximately two weeks, it cost the county somewhere in the neighborhood of nineteen thousand dollars, aside from the staff time, and, and this was a hearing whereby the county had approved the pit, and some neighbors had appealed it, and, and the discussion between staff and, and the council of the day was whether or not this is the best use of, of staff's time, but also taxpayer dollars in that regard. Certainly, from a staff perspective, you know, we're always open to do more research or consider alternative processes, especially now that we have an alternative board procedure, tribunal procedure in place. What we're hearing is, is that the process may become simpler, and it may become cheaper in that regard, because the, the board is moving away from, from verbal hearings where you have lawyers and experts and everything else, but it's, it's, you know, it's still very early days, so we don't know exactly what that looks like on the ground just yet. But, you know, we're open to, to, to all suggestions in that regard.
Thank you for that. And just to follow up quickly, I think you've addressed a good point, which is, even if you have this policy, you could get a summons that trumps that. So if it's really required, or whatever, we're going to be there, policy or no policy, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. I- in this case, once planning staff, or, or transportation staff, or any staff for that matter, have, have committed their opinions on paper, then, then those opinions are public, and anyone is free to, to call them into question. So staff could get a summons to appear at the hearing. The difference between appearing under summons versus appearing as a full party is that generally we're not paying for, for a solicitor or the same amount of preparation in case. So quite literally, you can receive a summons two days before you have to appear. You're there for a day, and, and yes, you've lost that day in terms of staff time, but you haven't spent two weeks, you know, working with your municipal or county solicitor preparing and, and incurring that expense. But staff are quite aware, and that is the reason sometimes for some of our lengthy reports, that, you know, our opinion can be called into question whether the county chooses to be there or not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'll call the motion on, on this presentation. All in favor? Okay, that motion's carried. Thank you, Scott. Anne-Marie, you have a quick update on the administration building? And the renovation update, which is moving along nicely, I understand.
Yes, renovation is moving along. We received occupancy for the finance and transportation area and the staff area down below on the other, downstairs on the other side is complete. That leaves our one staff area, the HR area on the bottom, and POA courts to be completed, and that's it. And of course, all of our outside stuff that needs to be done to our landscaping, so we're waiting on some weather for that. Roof is complete, except for the blue skin that needs to go over top of it, and some gravel, and again, waiting on some good weather days for that. And once that's on, I believe there's about a week or so that it has to sit and cure, and then they'll be able to hook up all of their air makeup systems that are not hooked up. We have some, but not all running at this point. So still looking for an opening or a tour in June, so we're hoping that we should have complete occupancy by mid-May that we're looking at, and would love to do a tour for council if, would like that before the June opening, which would be probably our first meeting in June.
Well, that's great. Great work, and it's shaping up nicely. Any comments from anybody on the state of our new facilities? Okay, thanks, Anne-Marie. That was great. Okay, we've done, I guess we're ready for any other business. Yes, Heather has some other business.
Just a reminder, if you are interested, or anyone else who is interested in running for the fall municipal election, the first candidate information session is being hosted in Owen Sound at the Bay Shore next Tuesday, April seventeenth, from six to eight in the shore room. All the Gray County clerks will be there from the local municipalities, as well as Tara and I will be there representing the county, and our municipal advisors from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs will also be there, and they will be speaking on a lot of technical information related to running for municipal office. So we'll also have information available on voter lookup, so I encourage anyone to register. You can go to the county site, or you can go to any of the local sites. The Eventbrite is where you register, and there'll be another one hosted in Flesherton, I think the twenty-first of June.
Okay, that's a good update. Okay, any notice of motions? Yes, Counsel Burley.
Well, I just, the motion's adjourned.
So I got to get one thing at a time. Notice of motion? Yes, Counsel Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In Southgate, we implemented, doesn't even matter how long ago, John, a year ago-ish, something that's referred to as open forum. It's a bit of an equivalent to a question period, if you will, and I would like to provide notice that I would like to bring that question to this council, wherein, before any meeting even begins, we allot a certain amount of time. In Southgate, it's fifteen minutes, and if anybody wants to show up, sign the signup sheet, address anything that's on the agenda, perhaps address something that's not on the agenda. It's been very well received, and in fact, surprisingly infrequently used. We were a little shy, but I'm not going to continue the pitch on it. There's my notice, and I will bring that forward for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel McQueen?
Other than bringing notice for salt and pepper for the kitchen, because I just kid, was joking with Heather on that one. Do I need a notice of motion, or is it going to be taken care of with regards to in-camera, dealing with it on agenda? Is that sort of going to come together by the clerk? I don't need to put it on the floor?
Being handled.
Salt and pepper is good, though.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, that being said, Counsel Burley's going to adjourn, Counsel Pringle is second. All in favor? We're finished. Thank you.